Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee, the whole meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024 at 6:15 PM. We did not have a meeting yesterday in observance of Labor Day, so we appreciate you all remembering the American worker and the great things that unions and the American worker have done for us by celebrating yesterday on Labor Day. Tonight, we have four recognitions and then a Serving with Excellence Award. For our recognitions, we will invite our Human Resources Director Kathleen Richman and our Human Resources Generalist Kelly Swinburne to the front to present some trophies from the Quad Cities Corporate Games.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. The Quad Cities Corporate Games is a community-based competition amongst various companies and the whole community, and it's very, very competitive. We've participated for four years. It's been going out for four years, and a lot of employees get very, very engaged in it for competition, for wellness, and they overall just get to meet a lot of people that they work with that they don't normally see on a daily basis. So we are very, very thankful that the mayor and the city council do support this, that we're able to do this on an annual basis. Overall, there's 27 competitions. We have some that are very, very competitive, dodgeballs won, basketball, pickleball, and then some that are more individual like yoga or virtual fitness walk or burst your thirst. The city won by a mere 49 points. It was very, very tight toward the end, but we were very excited to be able to bring the trophy back to the beautiful case that was built by my karma. The city won 18 medals, nine bronze, three silver, and six gold. And we also won the Impact Lifeblood Donation Challenge for the fourth time this year where we had 37 donations. So we're very excited about our awards that we receive. Yes. Yeah, there you go. Nice job, sir. Yes. And then with that, we always do what's called an MVP.
That even so, I'll get right back now?
Well, you can.
You want to watch the trophy?
Oh, I'm not going to waste the trophy. But no, we do have the MVP now.
No, go right ahead. You want to hand out the MVP?
Yes. Yes, that sounds good, Jeffrey. You could be good at that. The first one that I will announce is Caitlin Jansen. You've seen her before because this is her second year as an MVP. She's with the Police Department Administrative Assistant.
Come on, you gotta get up here for her.
Young supporter. She's.
Yay!
Participated in 14 of the events, so she's done a fantastic job.
And this inscribed piece of glass glass says, "Presented to Caitlin Jansen, voted as City of Bettendorf's Female Most Valuable Player, 2024 Quad Cities Corporate Games." Congratulations. Way to go.
Yay!
The next one here is Dana Burke, who's a combination inspector with Community Development Department. He's very, very excited, and he participated in eight of the events, so he did a nice job as well.
The developer voted as City of Bettendorf's Male Most Valuable Player in the 2024 Quad Cities Corporate Game. Congratulations. Well, you gotta get pictures. Come on.
Well, actually, you want to do the Instagrams first or not?
Okay.
We should probably do pictures on Quad Cities Corporate Games first.
We thought you were just gonna redo the mayor's.
Okay, so you want to do the Serving with Excellence Award? Brian, come on up.
Yes, sir.
This is Public Works Director Brian Schmidt.
Brian, you have the floor. Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to have Greg Manley come up, please. Greg Manley is sanitation worker for the City of Bettendorf. He's been with us for about a year and a half now. Does an excellent job. I want to kind of, first of all, talk about a little story that happened early August. Mr. Dan totally sent the mayor, city administrator, and assistant city administrator an email, and I want to share this story. I wanted to share an experience I had with a City of Bettendorf employee. In one of my not-so-bright moments a couple of weeks ago, I left my wallet on top of my car, and while loading up in the morning, as you might guess, I drove off with it still on the roof. I got a call two hours later from Greg Manley, who said he found my wallet while driving his motorcycle into work that morning. After he confirmed it was my wallet, he explained to me that he spent about 10 minutes chasing $100 bills all over River Drive, the matter of work, in traffic, without being ready to work. So he was traveling the next morning, and he had all of his traveling money, credit cards and ID, of course, and he wouldn't be able to get on that airplane if he did not have his wallet. So Greg made the arrangements for him to come pick it up at the Public Works Maintenance Center, and he picked it up that day. And then he wanted to recognize his integrity and to pass along the compliment that he is to the City of Bettendorf. Greg's actions that day are a true testament to Craig's spirit. He is an honest, dedicated, and committed employee, and definitely dedicated to excellence. He sets an example for others to emulate, and I'm proud to have him on my team. And the mayor, I would like for you to present.
That's a blast for you too, Greg.
An excellence in service of war. And I think this is the first one that we've ever had, because it's always the police and fire that are. I'm thankful he at least recognized one of my employees, and like I said, he's a great employee and a great example for others to end.
So this award is a Serving with Excellence Award presented to you, Greg Manley, for holding the mission, vision, and value statements of the City of Bettendorf's Public Works Department.
Thank you.
Plus, he's got a great name.
Yes.
You're right.
Oh, Greg.
Got a substitute photographer this evening.
Hey, thank you.
Awesome. Good job.
Congratulations.
Kathleen, you should give that to somebody. That looks heavy.
Oh, I'm just gonna get her.
Oh, perfect.
I have plans.
You should hold her ear over her head like Stanley Cup.
Stanley Cup.
You got a solid. Come on this way. Sneak, sneak, sneak.
Do each other a little.
Like you like each other.
Like you're in the corporate games.
Two, three. Thank you.
Nice job.
You want this?
Thank you, sir.
That will be helpful. I think you're standing through your head. You're welcome. Thank you. Great job. Let's give them all a little round of applause, please. I'll maximize it. All right. We have two consent agenda items for us to review this evening. For that, we welcome our Community Development Director, Mr. Mark Hunt. These are items Consent Q and R. Not really related, so you can do them one by one or do them together, and we'll do our motion, whatever you want.
Yes, sir. I have to admit, I did not recognize Dana Burke in the suit and dye. He's our plumbing inspector, so that is not his normal attire.
Very nice.
Cleans up pretty good.
Maybe that was planned.
Wait just a minute for that.
You guys are doing really good.
Your Honor, I'll start with Consent Q.
Thank you.
So this comes to you as Case 24-056 and 057. It's a site development plan and a related replat. This is a part of town you're really familiar with. It seems where everything is happening right now. Don't worry about the lines on the map. The green and red are a little bit difficult to see. I'll just use the telestrator to kind of show you what's happening here. So roughly this area is being replatted to create four lots. So this really big lot with the TBK, I'm sorry, with the IRNT golf course on it, and then three lots down here to create a four-lot subdivision, and then the site development plan associated with that right here that we'll talk about in just a second. That's my best John Madden I've ever done. So don't worry about which subdivision. It's been replatted so many times, it's almost easier just to show you what's happening than to try and go back through the history of it. Proposed uses for the site development plan, we're gonna replat, but the site development plan that you're gonna look at is automotive services, retail, and restaurant in kind of a strip mall fashion. This is community, commercial land use and C3 zoning, and it's been this way for quite a while now. So here's the replat, and this would come to you as FG80 Holdings Fifth Edition. Four lots. It's gonna be accessed off of this area here to the west, but not directly off of Forest Grove, so nothing coming in directly off of Forest Grove. And just remember, stormwater detention is regional out here, so we have regional stormwater for all of TBK and IRNT land is all regional stormwater. We also have some shared access easements here. You can access there as well, and then coming up this direction as well. And we'll talk to you, give you a site plan on this piece as well. Proposed site development plan is in the higher area highlighted in blue. This is kind of right at the end of the Gulf Driving Range, and it'll be a strip mall fashion development. So proposed building, 10,700 square feet, about two-thirds, maybe a little more than two-thirds, 60% will be used for an automotive use. The other are propositioned as retail and restaurant, but the known use coming here will be automotive accessing that part of it. 86 parking spaces. We've got the required number of ADA. We will have drive-through doors kind of in this area that will be drive-through both directions, obviously. We'll have a screen dumpster location at the northwest corner. That's in this area here. And then we can provide that stormwater off-site. All of TBK is situated off-site for the stormwater detention. Your landscape plan, not a lot to see here. We have 11 and a half tree factors. They've met them all. They'll put them in areas that are obviously out of the site triangles for egress and our turning movements. But again, fairly modest site plan when it comes to the plantings. We did work with the developer. We're gonna try and get away from being so maple-heavy in our city, just to have a little more diversity in our tree population for resistance to disease, and so we did work with the developer to do that here, and they were glad to do it, to be honest with you. Here's your elevations. The dark boxes, that is the garage bay doors for that automotive use kind of here, and then proposed retail on the left side of the screen. It does have that same kind of black, tan, gray architectural theme we're seeing really pop up out in TBK and IRNT land, and so we'll kind of match that theme. We're happy to see that as well as staff. You have a positive staff report. It's in your packet. You also have a positive recommendation for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mark on Consent Q? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two questions. First one is on the sidewalk. You know, we've spent a lot of effort putting in trails and sidewalks out in that area, and yet I don't see where you can access from the general sidewalk to the buildings. They have a piece of sidewalk around the building, but no access.
Yeah, they may not have that detail on here. I don't see it either. Yeah. Mr. Secretary, I don't think they have it. That's something we can suggest to them, and I'm sure they would comply. They've done pretty good about walkability out there, so we can talk to them about creating a curb cut for a sidewalk, if you will. I don't think it's on that.
May just be markings on the parking lot, you know, a sidewalk mark. And my second question is, being it's an automotive, do, what do we have to make sure that it doesn't become a junkyard? You know, I know that there's some automotive places in the past that all of a sudden you drive by it, and there's a stack of 24 old tires, you know, that sits there for weeks, or a pile of mufflers or whatever on the outside of the building, and then.
That was a big part of our deliberation at Planning and Zoning Commission, and we did add, and it's in your resolution, there's no auto sales, no outside tire storage of any kind allowed. They will have outside takeoffs. They have takeoff from the cars that they service, and then there's a two-times-a-week pickup, and those will be stored in that enclosed dumpster location. They also have private covenants in place as well. I talked to Kevin Kellerman, the developer here, and he had the same concerns. And so his private covenants, I think, match with our, the conditions in our resolution, which are no car sales and no outside storage of tires. Should address that. People don't always behave the way they're supposed to behave, and then that's where, you know, I get involved with my code enforcement team if we have to. Hopefully, that's not gonna be the issue here. We did deliberate about that, and we added those two conditions as part of the resolution, and I think that will address it. Thank you.
Other questions? Nick?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Mark, with the elevation, it's a little blurry on my screen, so can you help me to better understand? What's the height of this overall building going to be? And I, you know where I'm going with this.
Make it 10 stories tall?
That's right, yeah. It's not gonna happen to mirror the structure behind it, is it?
Yeah. It is not as tall as the structure behind it. It is a one-story structure. There are parapet walls, you know, in this location, and a parapet is really just a wall that extends above the ceiling height, if you will, the roof height. And that parapet wall is, you know, four or five feet, it appears. So it's probably, you know, a 15, 20-foot building, but it will absorb some light because it's just there. So it will have some absorption of light. Is it tall enough to block lights that are 30-foot tall? No, it's not. Even if we grade the site up a little bit, and they've thought about doing that to try and create some absorption. I think there's some other areas we can address that issue that you're talking about. In fact, I'm in works with IRNT on maybe some shrouds or lenses, something like that, to address that. But having that space filled in, because light bounces, and once the light's released, it's doing all kinds of things. It's bouncing, it's shining, and just having that area filled in will have some absorption.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion that Consent Q remain on tonight's agenda for consideration.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up on our consent agenda this evening. Moving to Consent R, please.
We're gonna go way across the road to Case 24-058, Lot 1, Competition Corner. So you're just gonna go south and east a little bit, south and west a little bit, I should say. Put you right here on 11 acres along Forest Grove Road and Middle Road. It's a site development plan, recently rezoned to C2, so that's probably familiar to you, just a month or two ago. The request is for a corporate office, corporate headquarters for financial service uses. It's a five-story building, 100,000 square feet of floor area. This is a really big development, and it's really got a lot of ancillary, almost a park-like atmosphere to it. I'll share that with you in a second. And the Apptons Quad City Bank and Trust slash QCR Holdings, which is the bank holding company associated with that bank. Here's your site plan. The building's gonna be situated on the northwest corner, kind of in this bracket fashion here. They'll have associated parking. This parking's unique in that it's actually two stories, but it's not a parking garage where you could like drive from one story to the other. So you have at-grade parking, and then you have almost like walkout basement fashion, parking underground. They're not connected, so the structure doesn't really appear to you to be that way until you're on the backside of it. A lot of stormwater retention, actually more than they need stormwater retention here. A little bit of dry retention will be located in this area as well. Lots and lots of parking spaces, 350 parking spaces between the exterior at-grade parking and that interior parking as well. Again, I mentioned kind of a park-like atmosphere. This headquarters does include this lake, which has got a trail around it, a walking path around it, an outdoor pavilion picnic shelter type of situation in this location, and then kind of an earth-built natural amphitheater here as well. So really building it as a place to have their employees spend time, you know, take breaks, maybe hold company functions as well. I always like the landscape plans. I feel like they show the picture so much better. So here's your landscape plan. I think they're required to have 56 trees per code. They give us 62 trees that meet our code, and then a whole lot more that are beyond our code in grasses, shrubs, and other plantings in and around the pond, in and around the periphery as well, around the dry storage area. So you're gonna have a lot of plantings and natural grasses and things like that. Talk about the right-of-way access a little bit. So of course, we have existing roads here, Forest Grove and Middle. You're gonna access off of Forest Grove at this location, right in, right out. Come through Roundabout. You can also access via this newly-built, yet named, South Road, but this will be public right-of-way with sidewalk. And you can access kind of the pavilion area here, more for employee access, but then also, or just employees, but then also customer access coming up off this new road to the south. This is a driveline, so this is not right-of-way, but this is right-of-way. So this is right-of-way, yet to be created. This is right-of-way. This aligns with Remington Road here on the east side. The southern road, of course, will be added. This curb cut in the beginning will probably be, you know, either way, but as we build the Roundabout out, there'll be a median here, so this will be right-in, right-out access only in the future. So you're accessing here, 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 a little bit of access here. So that's your right-of-way alignment, and we think that offers us a lot of flexibility as a city to pull some of those trips off of Middle Road and also kind of preserve our access of Remington running south and for future development. Give you a few elevations. There's a lot more in your packet and online, but it's technically five stories. This would be the kind of the fifth-story penthouse area. Again, similar kind of feel to that tan brown, lots of glass. We're seeing that elsewhere just nearby, as I mentioned previously. And here's the elevations from the front and from, I'm sorry, from the front, just showing you how that would look from the customer's point of view. So you have the QC Bank and Trust, you know, retail bank operation, but you also have the back office operations occupying most of the building. Around 300 employees scheduled to work here on, you know, day one, and maybe more growth after that. And here's your rear elevation, kind of that walkout basement style with the lower elevation here, looking from the rear. You have a positive staff report that's in your packet. You also have a recommendation that is positive for the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 21st. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Mark on Consent R? Yes, Lisa?
So back to the right end of the street design you had. So when they're coming out to the west, they're gonna be taking it right out only?
At this location?
Yeah.
So right now, it would be either direction?
Oh, it'll leave there. Okay.
When Middle Road gets redone and this median gets extended, that'll be right-in, right-out only.
And so pretty much if somebody's gonna go south on Middle, they're probably gonna be going right out, and they're gonna have all the traffic coming around that right out, and then they're gonna be going south again?
And then eventually, your south option, when Remington develops further, would be here as well.
Yeah.
So we get new north-south, and that's, I always say, north-south is our challenge in Bettendorf, right? Getting north and south is the hardest. So having that Remington go through in the future development will take trips off Middle Road, we hope.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the low, I mean, there's nothing we can do. I'm thinking of the loaded-up traffic going through the residential or adding to that Roundabout.
Well, when Remington Road gets constructed where the purple is, that'll be a three-lane street.
Yeah.
Oh, is it gonna be three-lane?
So it'll be like Tangle, it'll be like Tanglefoot.
Okay.
So it'll act as a collector immediately.
Okay.
So the residents that live there will understand that.
Yeah, okay.
Further questions? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. Did you say there's a right-in, right-out on the north side?
Right here.
Is there gonna be a boulevard so that we don't have to put up those yellow?
Right.
There is a boulevard.
No, we don't need delinators. No, but it'll be designed without the delinators. We'll have the actual boulevard.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Would you highlight the sidewalks for me, please?
Uh, I will.
You know, connection to the public sidewalks?
They do have a lot of connector paths.
I thought so too, but.
Yeah. Let me get there, sorry. So I'm gonna have to. Be on the site plan only. So we have one here on the site plan, and I believe we have trail access. Let's see. Sorry, those, if I zoom in, those will move around on you. Jerry, it's a little hard to read the detail on this, but I know there's up to two or three.
Why, I didn't pick it out at home.
Yeah, but I think there's two or three more, to be honest with you.
Looks like up in the right-hand corner, there's one that accesses.
Yeah.
Left, left, straight up.
One here.
Yeah.
Another one here, and I think there's a couple others as well.
And there'll be a trail on Middle Road, and there'll be a trail on Forest Grove Road.
Those two, if not more, and I think there's actually more.
Yep. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions on Consent R? Okay, then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the review of Consent R on tonight's meeting schedule.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take up Consent R tonight. Any other remaining consent agenda items? Any particular council member would like to discuss or ask questions about it this time? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor, on Consent S, which is settlement and release of contested litigation. I just want to verify, I don't want to pull it off the agenda, I just want to verify that. Outside Council does indeed recommend settling. Our city attorney recommends settling. The insurance company, they asked to pay the majority of the claim, recommends settling, and the city's actual out-of-pocket is $10,000. Is that all correct?
All four of those things are correct statements.
Thank you, sir. That's all I wanted to verify.
Anything else on Consent? The other Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. C, Charlie? What is that exactly? Is it like we got a bid and then they?
This is then part of the NetSuite for the computer software program. Jason, do you want to address that?
Right, so as you're aware, we've implemented the NetSuite for Government Software. We purchased that from Oracle America. We're also in the middle of implementing a UKG software application for HR and payroll. Our original agreement with Oracle did not contemplate marrying those two together, but we definitely want that to happen. So Oracle has asked for this amendment. Technically, this does authorize us to spend up to $45,842 more with Oracle than what you have authorized already, but I would tell you that the project so far, in certain categories, is well under budget, and I would expect that we'll come in under on the original contract and absorb most of these costs within that original budget. So just an authorization to do a little bit more work with Oracle than what we planned, but should be cost-neutral by the end of it.
That's something we want.
Absolutely, yes.
Well, the reason I ask, Your Honor, is it makes me crazy when we get a bid from somebody and then six months into it, oh, we need another $50,000. Oh, we need another $100,000. And I just, I don't like that, so I was just checking to see, but this sounds like it's completely different.
Anything else on Consent? Yes, Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number N, the rezoning for the property, south of Forest Grove, west of Middle Road. Mark, can you confirm that the urban reserve district that we're potentially looking to rezone this to does fit in? Because according to our comp plan, it is an urban activity, and I'm guessing that that maybe just the wording's a little bit different. So that does include the high-intensity use as well, urban high-intensity?
It does. So if you remember, we brought to you, oh, probably two or three council sessions ago, a new future land use map table that took the new future land use map uses and crosswalked them over to zoning districts, and one of those zoning districts is the UHI zoning district, and so it would allow that. Remember, the future land use map is, in terms of ours, it's a fuzzy map, and it has, that area has a.
And it has, that area has a lot of different uses on it, and if you look at that 50-acre site overall, while it's being brought to you by a hospital, the uses are a lot of different uses. You've got commercial uses, you've got restaurant uses, you've got retail uses, you've got hospital uses, and when you look at that whole thing, that master plan development through the urban high, this urban high-intensity DCA Development Character Area fits that, that picture in that future land use map with all the different colors on the map, right? So you saw some, you saw some heavier, heavier, more intense areas, you saw some lighter, less intense areas, just like the plan that they're bringing forward as part of the rezoning, has more intense areas to the north, where the hospital wants to go, less intense areas to the south, where maybe some lighter retail would go.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else on Consent? Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for all those items to be considered tonight on Consent.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take up our Consent agenda as written. I don't have any item to add to tonight's agenda, anybody here have an item to add to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We stand adjourned. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, at 7 o'clock PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Jager?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Palczynski?
Here.
Fantastic, thank you all for joining us. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or head dresses you may have, and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation given by Pastor Richard Picora of All Saints Lutheran Church. Please remain standing for the invocation.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance, seven to five. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor?
Dear Lord and Heavenly Father, all around us, we see the signs of change. The days grow shorter, the weather gets cooler, the leaves are changing on the trees, and we see changes in our community, the kids are back in school. But when we come to this council meeting, we hear plans for the future, plans that will offer new services, and we pray that these plans and projects that are coming to our community will serve us well, so that when we look back upon them in years ahead, we will say that they were done well and done with foresight. These things we pray in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Picora, great to see you as always. We'll begin this evening with a proclamation, this is a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Month and Suicide Prevention Week, which is September 8th through the 14th, 2024, and we welcome Cecilia Bailey, the Executive Director at the Quad Cities Open Network, to the center, as well as some other folks you have with you, if you'd like them to join you, we'd love to have you all come on.
All right, I do have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas the cities of Bettendorf, Iowa, and Moline, Illinois are members of the Quad City Health Initiative, and both cities have participated in the Quad Cities Behavioral Health Coalition, and whereas the month of September 2024 is National Suicide Prevention Month, and the week of September 8th through the 14th, 2024, is National Suicide Prevention Week. And whereas the city of Moline's Park and Recreation Department is implementing suicide prevention protocol and training, and whereas the city of Bettendorf's Police Department has implemented a police patch for mental health awareness, featuring two ribbons, one green for mental health awareness, and one purple and teal for suicide prevention. And whereas in recognition of suicide prevention, the city of Moline will host a two-mile walk over the I-74 Bridge called Walk for Zero Suicide on September 7th, 2024. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the mayor of the city of Bettendorf, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as Suicide Prevention Month, and the week of September 8th through the 14th, 2024, as Suicide Prevention Week in the city of Bettendorf, and I direct that the bridge be lit on September 6th and 7th in the colors of purple and teal. In recognition of suicide prevention, I encourage all citizens to participate in the Walk for Zero Suicide on September 7th, 2024, helping all communities to eventually have zero suicides.
Here, here, here.
You're welcome. Please, Cecilia, get on the floor.
Good evening, everyone, thank you so much for coming and being a witness to this, we are so incredibly honored to be here as Zero Suicide Initiative. As you know, suicide is, is something that touches most of us, it's usually within a three, a third degree in which we are impacted by suicide, so it really is a community issue, and so we're so honored and pleased to be here to accept this proclamation, as well as to watch that beautiful bridge be lit on the eve of our walk and for our walk. I have brought with me some wonderful guests, this, this work is not done alone, as Mayor stated, this is the work done through the Quad Cities Behavioral Health Coalition, and that coalition is 60, 70, 80 organizations strong, and it includes the whole gamut of organizations, behavioral health organizations, grassroots organizations, and mental health providers, and so we all are coming together today to say thank you, and I'd like them to introduce themselves, so you can see just how strong the love is in the community around suicide prevention.
Hi, everybody, I'm Jill Lilly, Director of Patient Behavioral Health, working at Union Point Health, Robert Young Center, I also serve as a steering committee member for the Quad City Behavioral Health Coalition, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having us here, I'm Angela Gianderbogits, I'm Director of Inpatient Behavioral Health at Genesis, I also used to serve on the steering committee for the Quad City Behavioral Health Coalition, and served on the Zero Suicide Walk Committee as well.
My name is Stav Remmler, I have a very short version, I'm a volunteer all over the place, I love the Zero Suicide Initiative with Cecilia and Minnie volunteering there, it's a passion, and I'm really excited about the colors of the bridge.
Thank you, I'm a Brunson, I'm with the Michaela's Hope Charitable Fund, that my husband and I created after we lost our 16-year-old daughter to suicide.
I'm Angie Tracy, I'm the director of the Carroll Center, which is through Bure French, representing the whole company of Bure French.
My name is Jeff Banks, I'm with Families and Friends of Suicide Law Support Group, we are a peer support group that meets the first Monday of every month, because of Labor Day, it'll actually be on the 9th, will be our meeting, so 6:30 on Monday, the 9th, at St. Mark's, it is for people who support and are there for each other around suicide
On behalf of the city of Bettendorf, thank you, each and every one of you, for all the good work you do in our community, we really appreciate the time that you give and in service, thank you.
Let's get a quick picture, we may need to do two rows.
Every...
One.
Come on over here, slide, you can go maybe, and then that'll be that, there, how's that? You're fired, you're fired.
We need some tall guys.
Cecilia, next time, bring tall people.
Three, thank you.
I'll, I'll do that, I'll work on that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Okay, we are at public requests of council, if there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, you may approach the podium in the back and be heard by council, please limit your comments to two minutes, please try not to be repetitive, and refrain from outbursts like clapping or yelling. Is there anybody here who wishes to be heard on public requests of council? We'll open that right now. Anybody for public request?
Thank you.
All right, seeing no movement, let's close public requests of council, let's move to an ordinance for Councilmember Brown to present.
Thank you, Your Honor, I have the second reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code, Section 6-1-2, speed restrictions by reducing the speed limit to 40 miles per hour on Criswell Street from Forest Grove Drive to Bell Drive, I have the approval of this ordinance, and it's second reading.
Any discussion on our second reading, we would have had this at committee of the whole, already a first reading to speed restriction, all right, seeing none, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed the second reading, a third meeting, reading will be required, for instance, our third and final reading here for Councilmember Jager to present.
Thank you, Your Honor, I do have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending Bettendorf City Code, Title 8, Chapter 1, Section 1, water well construction permits by adding a lust site at 1101 Devil's Glen Road, I move approval of third and final reading.
Second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Palczynski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Jager?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
All right, we have unanimously approved each and every item on tonight's consent agenda, it's time to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. We stand adjourned.